Hello and good evening and welcome to the 2014 Derrick County Commissioners Candidate's Forum, sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Derrick County. The League is a nonprofit political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League maintains a nonpartisan policy. It neither endorses nor opposes any political party or candidate. I'm Dr. Lynn Logan, and I am one of the co-presidents of the Derrick County League of Women Voters, and I will serve as moderator. The League members participating today, over on here reviewing our questions, are Joan Liston and Nancy Barandelli. Laura Lee D. Bernardo is going to be our timer. You'll hear about her duties in a minute. Marion Midget has been collecting cars and greeting. The candidates present tonight are Jack Shea and Bobby Culpepper, who are running for Commissioner-at-Large; Marguerite Midget Umflit and Virginia Simmons Tiller for District One; Beverly Gwen Boswell and Max Dutton for District Two; Wally Overman and Sandy Siemens Ross for the unexpired District-One seat. The format for this meeting is each candidate will have three minutes for our introductory speech. The timekeeper, Laurie, will signal when the candidate has 30 seconds remaining. The timekeeper will stand if the candidate continues to pass out allotted time. You don't even know what happens after that.
Maybe she jokes us.
Next, the candidates will respond to the questions from the audience, and the voters are asked to submit written questions, leisurely signed with your town residence and your name. League members will review the questions for subject matter, clarity, and relevance to avoid repetition. We believe this procedure will afford the greatest variety of subjects to be covered in our allotted time, and the signers will be asked to step up to the podium to ask their question, read it as it's written, and then continue to your seat, and I will continue moderating from there. The League advocates positive campaign practices, and we reserve the right to omit any question that is viewed as a personal attack or unrelated to campaign issues. Questions will be addressed to a specific candidate or all the candidates. There is two minutes allowed for the responses. Again, the timer will signal when there's 30 seconds. They can stand if the time goes over the allotted time. Opportunities will not be extended to those who had passed on the question the first time around. Finally, each candidate is entitled to a two-minute closing statement. Candidates drew numbers to establish the order in which they will be giving their opening statements. And, excuse me. We will begin with opening statements from Mr. Jack Shea, running, as I said, for...
At Large.
At Large, excuse me. Mr. Shea, excuse me.
My name is Jack Shea, and I am running for reelection as the at-large county commissioner for Derrick County. I am a doer, not a talker. I have lived in Derrick County for 25 years. During this time, I have seen many changes that have affected our economy. We have had peaks and valleys and many challenges facing our economy, not the least being federal and state government imposing more regulations and unfunded mandates on our industries, our schools, and our local government. Despite the current situation, I feel confident for our economy, our future, and for all of us, and I welcome your questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Culpepper?
Good evening. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to discuss some of the issues confronting working families of Derrick County. I am Bobby Culpepper. I have lived and worked in Derrick County all my life. My father Jimmy Culpepper and his parents Alan and Sylvia Culpepper, and my wife Jeanne Painter all made it to Derrick County. I completed all 12 grades in Derrick County Public Schools, graduated Mannie High School, class of 1979. There was no kindergarten back in 1966. I received a Bachelor of Science in Computer Science from North Carolina State University. I have a family complete with grandchildren that attend Derrick County Public Schools. I am the Democratic candidate for the county commissioner-at-large. My grandfather Hal was a Democrat. Sylvia was a Republican. However, she would not approve of the current Republican-controlled state government. Sylvia loved to brag about North Carolina's schools and roads, both of which the current administration is hurting. We, the people of Derrick County, the great state of North Carolina, and the United States cannot afford to continue on the path started in 2010. I served as a deacon at Nixet Baptist Church at the Outer Banks Worship Center. I am currently serving as a deacon at Oceanview Baptist Church, as well as on the Building and Grounds Committee. I served as the director of the Family Life Center, part of the Outer Banks Worship Center. Many of the children that skated there, even though they are now adults, still remember me. I have lived and worked my whole life in Derrick County. I have worked in the entertainment industry, the retail industry, and the school systems. I earned $48,000 back in 1994. I am here in 20,000 last year. I have lived well and not so well. I am the best voice for the working families of Derrick County. The cost of living in Derrick County is high due to our geography. There is plenty of money for payroll, however, many working families in Derrick County aren't making enough to survive. Low wages also increase the cost of government, resulting in more spending and higher taxes. Two issues affecting working families in Derrick County are low wages and the replacement of the Oregon River Bridge. I make less now than I did 10 years ago and less than half of what I did in 1994. I feel the same pain that other working families do. Like many natives, the only reason I can afford to live here is that I inherited my home, and like many working families, I am in danger of losing it. The Oregon River Bridge must be replaced. The families living on Hattress Island deserve safe, reliable, unrestricted access on and off the island. The bridge is essential for visitors, goods and services to enter Hattress Island. I would again like to thank the League of Women Voters and all in attendance for taking the time to discuss issues confronting working families in Derrick County.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Marguerite Midget Umflit, running for the District One.
I want to thank the League of Women Voters for having this forum tonight, and it's nice to look out and see all these friendly faces. And I hope that we do not disappoint you tonight. I am Marguerite Midget Umflit, and I am married to Ralph Umflit, and we live in Mannieo. I have roots in Derrick County that go back to the Mitchis and Meekins of Rodanthe. We are property owners and share your concerns regarding the operation of our county. We have three children that were raised and educated in Derrick County, and two of them still reside here and are working here. I am now and have been active for over 20 years in real estate. Since coming to Mannieo after marrying, I have been secretary to the superintendent of schools, worked in the dental field, been a Realtor, as well as chairman of the local Crisis Pregnancy Center, and have taught a Sunday School class for over 20 years. In these public services, I have had the unique opportunity to know the things that affect the daily lives of you, our citizens. If elected, I will be fiscally responsible with the taxpayers' monies. A Republican Board will endeavor to rein in the frivolous waste of your hard-earned tax money, just as you do in budgeting your finances in your home and households. I will be a strong advocate for tourism and the fishing industry. It is a shame that because of stifling over regulations, almost 90 percent of the seafood that comes into this country is imported from overseas. I am an advocate for smaller and less government interference in our daily lives. We see the inefficiency of the federal government and how our postal department, IRS, healthcare, and VA hospitals are administered, not to mention our open-door policy. We need a return to and adherence to the North Carolina and the U.S. Constitution. I support the Second Amendment that gives us the right to bear arms. I consider myself a patriot. At present, Derrick County is fourth in tourism in North Carolina. Having open, clean, accessible beaches is critical to our economy, as it produces 11,500 jobs and brings in state and local taxes to the tune of $85 million a year, resulting in a great tax relief to you and I. I do not have a personal agenda. This is my first experience in running for any public office. My only reason for seeking this office is to serve the citizens of Derrick County. If elected, I will be honest and forthright in seeking the best for our county.
Thank you very much. Next for District One is Virginia Simmons Tiller.
Good afternoon. Good evening, everyone. A special thanks to the League of Women Voters for hosting us tonight. Thank you very much. My name is Virginia Simmons Tiller, and I'm seeking reelection as your county commissioner. I'm a lifelong resident of Derrick County, born and raised on Roanoke Island. I am a graduate of Elizabeth City State University with a Bachelor of Science in Education. I have been employed throughout this county as any job you can do in the tourist business: cook and dishwashing, hotel housekeeper, all the positions that you can think about in the service industry. I have done those. I worked 10 years with Project Head Start, started as the cook there and ended up as the head teacher. Worked five years with the Derrick County Library as the children's librarian, traveling all over this county, sharing books and stories with our youth. And for 26 years, I worked as a staff person with College of Abilmar, ending up as one of the assistant deans for workforce development, retired after 26 years of service with them. I have two wonderful sons, Michael and Johnny Tiller. Michael's with me tonight. I was married for 35 years to the love of my life, Snooks Tiller, as everybody knew him around here, a local commercial fisherman. Snooks fished for over 50 years until he passed away. I learned so much about trying to survive as a waterman's wife, so I certainly empathize with the problems that our commercial fishermen's are having today. I have been honored and humbled by the good people of Derrick County for their support and confidence in me by electing me to serve as one of their representatives on the Derrick County Board of Commissioners. I am the most qualified candidate standing for election for District One to represent all the people of Derrick County. I feel that I have the ability of bringing good listening skills and consensus building, and both of those are crucial in getting things accomplished at the local government level. Based on my years of service on the school board and as a member of the Board of Commissioners, I understand the importance of listening closely to the voice of people and then putting that knowledge to work by networking with other elected officials and stakeholders throughout this community and state to build a consensus and find common ground so we can move forward together in a positive way to accomplish what is best for the people of Derrick County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now for District Two, Beverly Gwen Boswell.
Hi. I also want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this for us tonight, and I'd like to welcome the public. My family and I are long-term residents of Derrick County. My children have attended Derrick County Schools. I work in Kitty Hawk at a local medical facility, and my two children have both attended Derrick County Schools. As a matter of fact, they're both employed in Derrick County as well. Their father's employed as a county employee. I've been in the medical profession for over 23 years. I faced many challenges and many changes along the way. That makes me a problem solver, one who is not afraid of the unknown and who is ready to do the research and the hard work necessary for getting things done and moving forward. I have volunteered at each school, from the elementary school to the high school. I was a former PTSA president at First White High School. I've been on the school improvement team for four years. I volunteered in Chaperone, the Decker Club, to the state competition in Greensboro, North Carolina, and I also participate in the empty bowls dinners that the Derrick County Schools host every year. I volunteer at the town of Killdoble Hills. I'm a former member of the Special Streets and Projects Committee. I sit now on the planning board, and I also have a seat on the Historical Landmark Commission. I volunteer at the annual missions of Mercy Dental Clinic. I participated in the Walk Against Addiction. I've also participated and volunteered in the marathon and Storm the Beach event. I volunteer with the Wounded Warrior Project, providing nursing skills and medical care. I raise money for Disabled Veterans Fund and Raleigh's Army, which is a gringle-based childhood cancer relief project. I think here in Derrick County, we need to work together and make some big changes and some improvements. I possess the skills, the willingness, and the dedication that is required if I'm elected. It is time for Derrick County to make a change, so I ask that you vote for me on November the 4th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Also for District Two, Max Dutton.
Good evening. My name is Max Dutton, and I'm running for reelection as your commissioner in District Two. I first would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this great event tonight, and I want to thank all of you for being here. I see many friends in the audience this evening, and I appreciate you being here. I have lived in Derrick County for over 30 years with my wife Debbie, and Debbie, thank you for being here this evening, and worked in retail for 30 years in retail management. During this time, I've been a major supporter of Children's Miracle Network, for Children's Hospital, the King's Daughters for over 20 years, and many, many nonprofit organizations in our community have been a major supporter. I have served as Derrick County Commissioner for the past two terms, and I am seeking reelection for a third term. I currently serve as a member of the Airport Authorities Liaison to the Board of Education, Capital Improvements Committee, Bonding Authorities, Government Education Channel, and Shoreline Development. I am serving as chairman for the Outer Banks Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Coalition, and I've been a past member of the East Carolina Behavioral Health and the Community Development Corporation. I've been a volunteer coach for youth basketball with Derrick County Parks and Recreation and a member of Sunrise Church of Christ. Having had the opportunity to serve as Derrick County Commissioner for the past eight years, it has been rewarding both personally and professionally. I've been part and have seen many positive changes in our county to benefit all of our citizens. There is still much work to be done, and I know that the knowledge and experience I bring will facilitate continued development and improvements to our county for all of us. I will, if elected, sustain the quality of life for all Derrick County citizens through integrity, honesty, and experience, and I welcome the challenge, and I ask for your vote on November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now for the unexpired District-One seat, the two candidates, Wally Overman and Sandy Siemens Ross. Ms. Ross was the one that won the toss-up on this one, so you may begin.
Good evening. I'm Sandy Siemens Ross, and I too want to thank the League of Women Voters for having me here. One of my most cherished awards that I've received over the years was the 2010 Open Government Hero of the Year, which was given to me by the North Carolina Open Government Coalition and the League of Women Voters, the Broadcast Association, North Carolina President Association, are all of the founding members of that organization. I retired two years ago from the Outer Banks Sentinel as managing editor. Since that time, I do freelance journalism, public relations, consulting, and every now and then I even slip in some speech writing. I live in Stumpy Point, which is really in Derrick County. We have clerks ask us all the time for our driver's license, because they're pretty sure it's in Hyde. We're probably the most out-of-the-way, most misunderstood village in the whole state. People come out there and they see a small community sitting in the middle of the refuge, and we only have one road that wraps around the bay. We have one little dog-leg road that is First Street, and for three years, I looked for Second Street, and finally, I couldn't stand it anymore, so I said, "Well, where is Second Street?" And they said, "Well, we don't have one." I said, "Well, then why do we have a First Street?" And they said, "Well, in the storm of 54, when houses washed back in the marsh, that's the worst place we got them to, so it's First Street." We have our little idiosyncrasies there. We also have the highest percentage of college-educated people in Derrick County in one community. Many of our fishermen are college-educated. Their children are college-educated. We have a lot of retired professors and doctors and people like that who own property there. And the reason we live there is because we love Derrick County. We can look out across the bay. We can watch the fishing boats go in and out. We have nature all around us, and those are all the things that make Derrick County great. Stumpy Point is a commercial fishing village, and my husband is a seafood purveyor and does some commercial fishing on the side, so the commercial industry is very important to me. And I've worked for more than 20 years, not just supporting them verbally, but helping them write congressional testimony, helping them write letters, helping them make the calls that they need to make. And for two years, I took a break from journalism to work for the North Carolina Fisheries Association when the Fisheries Reform Act was being formed and worked on that and was at the markup when that bill was finally passed. I hope you'll get to know Stumpy Point. I hope you'll get to know me better, and thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you very much. Mr. Overman.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for the opportunity to meet here tonight to discuss issues and subjects of interest to the people of Derrick County. I'm Wally Overman, Derrick County Commissioner from District One, and I'm running for this seat to continue my service to Derrick County. I'm a fiscally responsible conservative Republican. My wife Ruth and I have been married 17 years, and we have three children and three grandchildren. We live in the Skiko community on Roanoke Island, and Ruth has a small business in Maniow. She is also a pancreatic cancer survivor, which means that she is as tough as nails. Fortunately for me, she is also sweet as pie and is my very own hero. If any of you in the League do not know her, it would be good to acquaint yourselves with her. As I have stated in previous forums, I am not a politician. This is the first time I have held public office, and I was appointed to this seat following the tragic loss of Commissioner Richard Johnson. Professionally, I had a 40-year career in the U.S. and international textile industry after my graduation from NC State University with a Bachelor of Science degree in textile technology. My practical experience in working with companies, both foreign and domestic, defines my thinking with regard to the administration of government. I believe that common sense approaches to problem-solving in most cases serves both industry and government best. Derrick County is unique in its geography and its needs as a function of that geography. Issues with access for our citizens and visitors, whether replacement of the Bonner Bridge, Highway 12 corridor protection at the tri-villages in Buxton, or just getting onto the miles and miles of our beautiful beaches, continue to be areas of concern for us all. Your Board of Commissioners and I continue to relentlessly advocate for your behalf regarding these issues. Our primary economic generators include tourism, boat building, and commercial charter and recreational fishing, and they must all be healthy and must be supported and sustained for the much-needed growth in the county. For this to occur, both Oregon and Harris inlets should be fully open, and in the case of Oregon inlet, stabilized and maintained to federal specifications as a paranormal. I have been part of meetings at the state, federal, and local levels in this regard as an advocate for these needs and will continue to do so. My commitment to the people of Derrick County is that I will always be accessible, courteous, and sensitive to your needs and concerns in both agreement and debate. I will strive to exercise sound judgment, and I respectfully ask for your vote on November 4th.
Thank you very much. Now it's your turn. It's time to ask some questions. The order of answering has already been determined, so no one will be answering first all the time, and no one will be answering last all the time. They've already been mixed up, so I will go by the schedule I've created here to mix up the answers. Colleen Almany and James Caverly. Surely, with such a lovely audience, we have more curiosity, so I think we should put your cards out, and they will come around and get those questions. Good evening. Without repeating an answer already given, what do you feel is the main difference between you and the person you're running against? This first question goes to Mr. Shea.
Okay. It's hard to be humble when you're asked questions like that. I think probably my background and experience, I have extensive experience in business in international and national companies. I am currently a member of the Board of Directors of an international pharmaceutical company, serving as chairman of the Corporate Governance Committee. I have a small business, consulting business, I'm president of that, and I think I know what's needed to bring charge to Derrick County.
Thank you very much. Mr. Culpepper?
Well, I've lived in Derrick County all my life, and I've seen how different groups react. Like, new businesses came in. RC Theaters came in and immediately told me the job I had had for the last 17 years didn't exist anymore. I know what downsizing does, and I know why it's not a good idea. I also know the courts back in the 1800s gave the business owners a lot of control over the jobs. We're a right-to-work state, so when Kmart pulled me from the overnight shift and put me in a supervisory position, they were allowed to do that without giving me a raise. It used to be that we were paid based on what we knew what we could do. It doesn't work that way anymore. I see a lot of problems like this, but I don't see any of the current government doing anything about it. They seem to think it's okay, but it's not okay when so many people are on food stamps, so many people are on Medicaid, there's a problem with wages, and it has to be addressed. As far as new jobs, yes, we create lots of new jobs in Derrick County. It's just that the people that live here don't seem to get them. We seem to bring in more new people every day and forget about the people that already live here, and that's another thing that I want to deal with.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Umflit?
The main difference, I think, is our philosophy of life. My opponent is a Democrat. I am a Republican. I am ultra-conservative. I believe in smaller government. I believe in the people having more input in their government. I am concerned with the voter turnout in Derrick County of the evident unconcern of the majority of the people. This does not include you who are here tonight, but when we have a 20 percent turnout of people to vote, 20 percent of our people are making the decisions of who will serve the county. I have a passion to serve. I have never run for a public office before, but I feel that with my conservative views, and I think it's very important when we're going to our state government, which is Republican, and it looks like that in our federal government, we're going to have a majority in the House and the Senate, will be Republicans, I think when we go and ask for funding that it will make a difference in how they view what we ask for. So I'm excited and would like the opportunity to serve you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Tiller?
My prior experience as a school board member, as well as a county commissioner, has allowed me to work very closely with all citizens of Derrick County, and it certainly does not matter whether, what party you are, because once you are elected to this seat, you become the commissioner for Derrick County citizens, and that's exactly what I have been doing all the time that I have served. I serve all of the citizens. So I think with that tells me that the citizens of Derrick County does not care what you are as long as you work to help them, and that's what I try to do.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Boswell?
Well, I believe that I have a new, fresh outlook for Derrick County. I have different priorities, and I feel that we should have a less intrusive government in our life. and I feel that we should have a less intrusive government in our lives. And we need to- I can't stress enough the importance of a balanced budget, and it doesn't seem to be the current administration's priority at this time, even though our bond rating is in deep jeopardy. I think that I have the skills, the puzzle-making skills, to go back and research and move forward. I'm also very familiar with lots of people in Deer County, from their children, from different schools, church functions, and I know their needs and their wants. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dutton?
I think I'd start out by saying I have a great passion for our county. And whether it be Republican or Democrat, a lot of times when you go to the White House, you see a lot of differences just because you're Republican or you're Democrat. Here in Deer County, I feel you need to communicate with all the citizens and sustain this county for all the citizens that live here. And as far as being fresh, I've never been so fresh in my life to make this county the very best it can possibly be. And as far as our bond ratings right now, just so you know, they're excellent. Our bond ratings are excellent, and our finances in the county are very, very strong, if anyone says otherwise to that. I know my board members myself spent months and months on a hundred million dollar budget. And I know in my retail career, I ran one of the largest businesses down here successfully, and I'm proud of that. And not for me, but all the great folks that I've worked with, all the great people that supported me in the county, in business, and are still doing so today. So just the passion I have for this county, I think, means, you know, speaks in volume. And I want to help every last person in this county regardless what the situation may be. It wouldn't matter what it would be. But that's who I am, and I hope to be your next re-elected Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Overman?
All of my experience is from the private sector. And we have a little different way of looking at things and a different way sometimes of approaching problems and solving problematic things. You hear the term outside the box a lot. Well, when you're in the private sector and you've spent forty years in that, you learn to look at things with a lot of alternatives, and ultimately you try to pick the best one. The problem is never making a decision, the problem is having all the facts. Experience in the private sector, one of the first things that you learn is you know you can't spend what you don't have or what you're not capable of budgeting for. And that is a crucial part of what we do with the county. I have a true desire to serve and make Deer County a better place, and for the last eleven months I have worked very hard to see that that happens in a variety of areas. Good ideas can come from any sources, as has been mentioned here before. And the more good ideas we have, the better off we can help in governing this county. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Ross?
For thirty years, I covered local governments in North Carolina, Kentucky, and Virginia. I saw what worked and what didn't work. I participated from a press viewpoint with all the local governments around me. And I learned a lot of things during that time. I also came at it with a different perspective. Sometimes you can be in a place so long that you do tomorrow what you did yesterday just because you don't have to think about it. Deer County has done an incredible job getting us through the last six years. It was awful with all the foreclosures and all the different problems. But now it's time to stop saying, you know, we've got to stay so tight that we're strangling things. We have some major problems going on in the county, and we need to be honest about them and start attacking them and moving forward. The- one of the strangest truths that kind of slapped me in the face the other day is we seek all the wealth around us, but when you get down to the basics and get the numbers, Deer County is a poor county. We're not much more better off than Hyde County next door. There are individuals that are, there are corporations that send all the money that they make here out of the area. There are property owners who live out of area. We have a lot of money flowing out. The third quarter of 2013, the average salary in Deer County was five hundred dollars. And in January 2014, we had a fourteen point seven percent unemployment rate, and that didn't include those who had stopped working. We need to attack our economy, and we have to build a second economy that's year-round. With thirty-five thousand people, we can do that. We don't necessarily need more businesses, we need customers, and to do that, people have to earn a living. Thank you.
Well, thank you. After Mr. Caverly is Morrison?
Recently, the town of Kill Devil Hills, Manio, Nagshead, and Duck, as well as the Visitor Bureau and the Chamber of Commerce, have all reasserted their opposition to offshore drilling for natural gas and oil. How do you stand on this offshore drilling issue and why? Also, if elected, would you ask the Deer County Commissioners to state publicly their position on offshore drilling?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Caverly. This rounded question, we're going to start with Ms. Elfler.
Thank you. I'm in favor of offshore drilling. I'm not in favor of sin- excuse me, of OPEC getting our money, which is funding all of the unsettledness that we have in the Middle East. But also, along with being in favor of offshore drilling, I am in favor of having extensive studies done to find out how it affects the ecology and to make sure that it is safe for our environment, for our beaches, and for the sea life. But we have to think long-term. We have to look at being self-sufficient in the oil industry.
All right, thank you very much. Now, Mr. Culpepper?
I'm totally opposed to offshore drilling. There are just some businesses that just don't belong on the outer banks, and that's one of them because of the threat it does to all of us. One spill could wipe out half a summer, and that would mean plunders, if not thousands of lost jobs, small businesses would close, it would be a terrible tragedy. I'm in favor of natural gas, it's already here. Fracking's already done, the pipeline is setting right out there. If we're going to look at an alternative energy source, let's get one that's already in our backyard that's already here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shea, your opinion on this?
I know that we need to be energy independent. We're sending trillions of dollars literally to our enemies. Offshore drilling, if it can be done safely, is something we ought to look at. But we need to look at it very carefully to be sure, A, where it will take place, B, what would happen if we had a leak, and C, is it economical and worth doing?
All right, thank you. Ms. Ross?
There was a story that came out in North Carolina Coast Today, which is the Coastal Federation's paper, that nailed with the talk of fracking and oil and all these things. We have attracted companies back here to check out the wells that were drilled on Hatteras Island many years ago, and they came up dry. Well, because of the new technology and because of the state's new energy policy, they're coming back to take another shot at us to see if there's something there. The testing that they plan on start doing, I believe it's next summer, with the seismic air guns to map the bottom of the outer banks. There's all kinds of evidence that it kills marine mammals, and they don't know what the effect is on other kinds of sea life. I can tell you that if a commercial fisherman runs into a sea mammal accidentally in its net and doesn't call in right away, even though the animal's not hurt and it's still alive, he can lose his license. And yet, we're going to let them come in and jeopardize all these animals. If we have an oil spill out there, it doesn't matter how much beach nourishment you have, they're not going to come to a beach with tar ball bombs everywhere. And if you've never seen that, you need to go to Atlantic Beach where they have it regularly because it comes out of the port there where there's so much oil in the water. Fracking is the other thing that we need to be very, very concerned about, and the board needs to be very vocal. Fracking has no upside for us. The science is there to show that it's major problems. If we get chemicals in our aquifer because of fracking, there's no fixing it. You can't strain it out. They've made it illegal to tell you what those chemicals are, so you wouldn't even know what you were trying to strain out. And so it's- Deer County has to stand up and be vehement that these are not good possibilities nor are they anything that we want.
Thank you. Mr. Overman?
We as a nation have to and need to work toward energy independence. But it must not be done carelessly, and it must not be done callously. First, we have to find out what's there, and that is the purpose for the testing. Then we need to be open to discussion regarding the safety of the process of acquisition. If it poses serious environmental or otherwise threats to Deer County, we don't need to be doing it. If it is safe to do it, then it needs to be given its due consideration. The basic answer in coming down to this is what do we, as a county, have to gain? And when that question is answered, then we know how to move forward if we so desire. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dutton?
I know when Gulf Shores, Alabama, had the oil spill down there, and you may all recall that. I know I visited down there, and they were going through quite a time. And of course, I was very impressed to the extent they went to get everything back to normal. And it took a little while, but I know I got to speak to some people on what- some things they possibly didn't have in the right place to prevent what happened. You know, they never thought that would happen. But anyways, I guess my take is on it, everything going on in the world, I know there's a point where we need to be self-sufficient. And yes, we're sending monies to places that right now I don't feel we should be. So I just know at some point I feel like we need to be energy independent, but we need to do it in a very safe manner. I know if I was ever to be one of the ones to sign off on it, someone would have to prove to me that everything was very safe and that we would not have that type of problem on our outer banks. And if it can be done safely, I would say we need to go in that direction. But safety would have to be first.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Boswell?
Senate Bill 786 was passed by bipartisan vote in both the House and the Senate. And that means both Democrat and Republican alike favor continuing to explore the potential of our natural gas and other energy resources. Safety is the key. Deer County is priority. We do need to be self-sufficient and independent. We have to make sure that the use of our natural gas exploration is safe and clean burning, shown from the US- from the technology that's been developed for over fifty years. And this year, Lisa Jackson from the EPA, she says, "I'm not aware of any proven case where the fracking process itself has affected water." Of course, there's ongoing investigations. Also, we have 11-4-2013, there's nothing inherently dangerous in fracking that sound engineering practices can't accomplish. So that's what the Senate and the House passed. So we have to take that under advisement with our studies as well before we move forward in any way, shape, or form. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would like to ask the audience to listen, please. Thank you. Ms. Tiller?
I am opposed to offshore drilling, fracking, whatever the correct term is. As we all know, our outer bank sits on the Yorktown Aquifer, which is downhill from where fracking is scheduled to start next year. How will this affect us as a county, as citizens of this county? This could have a dramatic effect on our citizens. We've all heard the horror stories about the smell and the fumes in the different towns where the water, you can like imagine, put the world on fire. And you can turn on your kitchen sink and strike a match, and you can watch the water burn. We don't want that for Deer County. The Deer County Board of Commissioners has opposed the introduction of wastewater from fracking being drilled into our grounds because it's going to affect our water system. Plain and simple. If people want to frac in Wade County or Guilford County or wherever, let them keep it in their area. Don't send it to us. Regardless of where the wastewater is pumped, it goes into the ground. And it's always that concern about whether or not it will affect the water that we drink and that we use. So what we really need to do is to make sure that our legislators, that's in Raleigh and in DC, are constantly made aware that we oppose this, if we oppose it as a Commissioner group, and if the citizens keep telling us, let's not do that. Because our economy depends on the tourists that come here. And they're not coming to our beaches if our beaches are not beautiful and clean. So that's my actual argument.
Well, thank you very much. Earl Keel?
Many of you have mentioned the importance of tourism as the base of our economy in Deer County. And I think there are many in the pub- of the public who wonder whether we've reached saturation in the tourism industry, and in any case, the level of jobs it generates are not that high. And so my question to each candidate is, would you support hiring an Economic Development Director to bring high-tech and medical pharmaceutical companies to Deer County, thus creating paying, high-paying jobs?
Question three, we'll start with Mr. Culpepper.
There are plenty of high-paying jobs here, it's just that the natives don't seem to get them. A perfect example is our own public school system. The highest-paying job there did not go to a local, neither did any of the really high-paying jobs. It's almost like we keep shooting ourselves in the foot. We get a business that can produce a high-paying job, but none of the locals get it. I don't know the single Manio High School graduate or Deer County School graduate that's ever been a manager at Kmart. I don't think any have been a manager at Walmart. Max would know that better than I would. But I, for some reason, we don't give the local people a fair shot. You know, equal work for equal pay has always been something that women talk about, but it applies to every person here on the outer banks. We're just not quite often given a fair chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tiller?
The question would- would I support high-tech? Having been born and raised here in Deer County and having worked in just about every field trying to make ends meet, then whatever we can do to bring more jobs to this county, I would certainly be in support of it. Because of the way we are situated, because we are surrounded by water, tourism will always be a mainstay as far as jobs in this area. But someone wanting to come in to do a high-tech program or whatever, yes, I would certainly support that. I think it's important that our citizens, our businesses, come up with new ideas to help us keep our economy stable and growing. And ever since I have lived here, it has been something new coming up, and I think it will continue to be that way. So I would support anything that would bring high-tech, high-paying jobs to Deer County.
Thank you very much.
As long as it's legal.
Thank you for that caveat. Ms. Boswell?
We live in a unique area. I don't see a place that we could put a large pharmaceutical facility or any of our large industries such as textiles, et cetera. We do need jobs, and we need year-round jobs, not just for the tourist season. I'm in favor- I'm in favor of any opportunities, be it high-tech or restaurant or any area that will give our citizens jobs year-round. That's the whole thing. We have to have a year-round. And if we open up the inlet and keep her safe and working well, we'll have that. We'll have the boat building back. We'll have the fishing back. So we have to work with what we have right now. But I'm in support for any job opportunity that will make Dare County prosper. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shea, your views?
Okay. Well, there are many high-tech and pharmaceutical jobs that would be appropriate here in the county. I'm not advocating a physical plant because of the problems with waste and all of that that might be associated with it. Jobs that might be appropriate would be customer service, financial office, credit office, sales office, technical support. They could be located here. This would be an ideal place for them. And we're not causing trouble in terms of adding any pollution to the aquifers or anything else. And as I will explain later, I'm involved in trying to bring these kinds of jobs to the county.
Thank you very much. Ms. Ross?
Oh, I'm sorry. I think the first part of that question was, would you support hiring an economic developer? No, I wouldn't. I have, for 30 years, I've seen counties and local governments hire economic developers. I've never seen one pay for themselves. Our problem isn't that we don't have enough jobs. Our problem is we don't have enough customers. If we could pump money into our local economy so that people have more money for discretionary spending, so that they can buy the goods and services that are here, that would be our jobs. We're in for a tough, tough winter down on Hatteras Island. The unemployment was cut back substantially. The earned income credit, 227 families lost that. That's more than a quarter of a million dollars in direct impacts, about just under a half million dollars. The, the constant problems with the bridge and the road and, and all those different things. What, what we need is money flowing through the, the economy. And money flows up, it doesn't trickle down. I think we need to start by seeing if we can get COA made into Dare County Community College and start advertising that college to get kids in from other areas. They come in, they have housing, they have food, and they have incidentals. I think that we need to pay the county employees what they should be making. It's a real mess. It's not anybody's fault. It's things that just happened over time, but it's, but we have got to stop. We can't have county employees that, that qualify for food stamps and other welfare programs. That's disgraceful. If they have more money, there's more money out in the economy and it benefits everyone. And we get money back on the sales tax and the, and the different ways that that impacts the economy. For every dollar that's spent, the direct impact is a dollar sixty-eight. So an investment in our county employees would be the best economic development tool we could use right now.
Well, thank you. Mr. Dunn?
Yes, back on September 11th of this year, as was Secretary Decker, economic development was talked about quite a bit. Do I think we need to go out and hire someone? No, but I think our board of commissioners, along with any group that's willing, needs to have that vision, you know, of our future. Because our economic development is our future right here. And there again, whether it be healthcare, education, schools, our beaches, our clean beaches and, and our fantastic water, I mean, that needs to be front and foremost. And just the different things we can do in our community. Just talking to the tourism members yesterday, and the communication they have going on right now for economic development is reaching out to a million people a week. So that, that economic development is going to help our community. But there's other things, and I know we only have a couple minutes, but if we don't keep the Oregon inlet open, which is our highway to the Atlantic Ocean for our fishermen, our sport fishermen, this year's Billfish Tournament at Pirate's Cove, and I hope I have the numbers right, normally 100 boats, we've got a Pirate's Cove. 29 boats went out of Pirate's Cove. Everyone else docked up in Virginia to come down and have safe travels versus going through the Oregon inlet. I know the Oregon inlet has affected and make, made us suffer the loss of 41% of our boat builders and 20% of our fishpacking houses in Wana Chee's. So there's a lot that has to happen in our community, but economic development, I'm glad you brought that up because it needs to be front and foremost in our county.
Thank you very much. Ms. Ufland?
No, I'm not in favor of hiring an economic developer. I think that we need to look at what we have already here that is available to us. I think that we need to look at the unskilled labor field that is sorely lacking in our area with having trained people. We need a technical school to train the individuals that do not want to go on to get a higher education. We need to have Oregon inlet open so that the sport fishing industry can thrive here. It brings in revenue and not only that, but it, it makes us unique in this area of being able to have people come from all over the country to enjoy the fishing that has been done in the past in Dare County. We need to also have Oregon inlet open so that we can support the deep sea fishing industry that now is having to go out of state in order to load and unload their catches. Tourism is one of the mainstays of Dare County. It's the engine that runs our county. I'm, I'm in favor of doing anything and everything that we can to bring in other types of jobs. Technical jobs would be absolutely wonderful. And with the computer industry the way it is, people can do that type of work from their home. They do not have to have an office and be out and working. And I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Mr. Overman?
Yes.
Okay. You would like to expand your note?
When Secretary Decker was here, she made one really basic point. And she said, "All economic development is local." The people that you, or that we're talking about here, I asked the, the question was centered around is hiring an economic development professional who is, we talk up here about, well, we'd like to get somebody that does this, or we'd like to get somebody that does that. An economic development professional knows where to find them, knows what fit is, and is able to recruit those companies that fit the categories that we need for Dare County. I may, I, I just think that is, without saying that, that those of us here might not know what we're doing in that regard. We might not. But a, a true economic development professional, I believe, could help Dare County find things. If there's anything out there that would work for us, they can help us find it.
Thank you very much. The next questioner is going to be Alfred Jackson. And remember to, as I asked you before, to read your question as you've written it, because that's the question that you want to hear.
In view of the extreme budget cuts that the state has imposed on us and the cuts that are going to be upcoming in education and health services and capital construction, particularly roads, road construction in Dare County, would each of you offer, what specific single initiative you would propose to counteract these cuts, if any? Thank you.
Question number four, we're going to begin this one with Ms. Tillit.
Money will always be a concern in Dare County, even though everyone out of Dare County, all over the state of North Carolina thinks that we're rich and that we can afford everything. I wish that we could. But to answer your question, I can give you the example of our public school system. Having served as a school board member, I know what it takes to operate the schools. And having, and serving currently as a commissioner, I know what it takes to operate our county. Trying to reach a consensus sometimes seems difficult, but working together as two boards, we were, we were able this year to make sure that our students, the school system was given enough money to make sure our schools are run in the way that we would like for them to, to run. Because, as I said before, because our economy is tourist and we get most of our money from that, then working along with the Outer Banks Tourism Board and that organization helping them to promote our county so that more visitors will come and, and visit us and spend money here, we will always be trying our best to find ways to bring money to Dare County to help continue to provide the services to our citizens that they currently get. A lot of us decide that we need to cut this and cut that, but when you ask specifically what do you want cut, nobody wants to cut what they are more interested in. So yes, we, we need to do something to make sure funds are there.
Thank you very much. Mr. Overman?
I think the questions would be, what are the severity of the cuts and what category would the cuts be in? I think roads were mentioned, but it was, if it's a more generic type of question, I think we would have to know where the cuts are. Obviously, we are a well-funded education system in Dare County. And I can tell you that the board of commissioners is going to see that education continues to be well-funded in Dare County. In addition to that, we're going to see that the physical plants of the schools are going to be maintained properly. The, the basic answer gets down to one of self-sufficiency. And we have a number of, of things that we are looking at right now, one of which is how do we keep Oregon inlet maintained with not only lack of state funds, but lack of federal funds? And there are things that we have to do as a county that are mandated and things that we have to do because of local need. And the things that are mandated and the local need category items are going to be funded in some fashion by Dare County. Just like operating any other type of, of government entity or business, when you get in a posture of running out of money, then you're going to have to start looking at doing some cuts. And none of us want to get in that posture. But having a definition of, of what the cuts are and what the severity of those cuts are, I think are the basic elements needed to know exactly how the, how the county would need to respond to, to the, the question.
All right. Thank you so much. Ms. Boswell?
Thank you. We must be physically responsible with taxpayer monies. We need to scrutinize the spending and necessity and practicality of each and every line item. I'm proud to say that the Board of Education is funded very well and it should be continued at such a rate as necessary. We need to be transparent with our budget in order to save monies. Perhaps we could each call in each head of the department and go over line-by-line budget items. That's the, I mean, you can't just say, "I'm going to cut this or I'm going to cut that." That's not possible. There are items that we need and cannot do without. But that's the important thing we need to realize. What is a need and what is a want? And thus, therefore, we call each head of the department in with the finance officer and we go over line-by-line budget to determine what's necessary. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Dunn?
Tell you, if I understood the question...
Would you like me to re-read it again?
I think I have it. Thank you, though.
Okay.
Cuts coming from the state, most of them that come to us and have, in the last several years, our unfunded mandates, that just all of a sudden you're being cut these funds. And I know our board of commissioners have gotten together to figure out, okay, what are we going to do here? And even, I'm trying to think if that's been two or three years ago, it even affected our schools, which our schools get $20 million a year from the county in the budget, which I know we've been working very closely with the school board to make sure that that is all working. And this year, we probably had some of the best meetings as a board of commissioners and the school board that I think we ever have, you know, to figure out exactly what we, we need to do because we are concerned about some of the, the upkeep on the schools was falling behind. But together, both boards figured out how we get this caught up and not let this happen again. So if I answered that correctly, those unfunded mandates are the ones that I know have always concerned me the most because we've, the budgets that we've worked with and the line items that we've worked with, like I said, a budget you spent months and months and months to figure out what else can we do? And our county manager, Bobby Outen, which I have to sing him some praises weekly, he meets with his department managers, you know, that runs every one of the, the county departments to, to do just that, to figure, okay, how can we pull back? What can you do in your department? What can we consolidate? You know, which has happened with, you know, the Department of Health and Human Services, consolidated now to save money. And we're constantly going in that direction to consolidate and have more funds in our county, whether it be for the schools or just to operate the county the very best we can for you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shea?
As I understand the question was, what single thing?
Would you like me to reread the question?
Please.
Certainly. "In view of the extreme budget cuts by the state legislature, what plans would you offer, if any, to protect the level of our education services, health services, and capital construction, especially road construction in Dare County?"
Of course, road construction is a concern of state DRT and not, in our purview as a commissioner. But for the other issues, the answer to that is bring in new businesses and higher-paying jobs. If, if we're successful in doing that, and I'm working very diligently to do that, we'll bring in the new revenue, not only for the individuals with higher-paying jobs, but extra revenue for the county to offset these cuts that are coming our way. I, I think that's the only answer that, that we could have for this situation. We're not going to find a diamond mine underneath our store up here to come up with those, with, you know, monies and all. So the answer is, we've got to bring in new businesses, appropriate businesses, and better-paying jobs. And that would certainly offset the issue of unfunded mandates and cuts.
Thank you very much. Next, Ms. Ufland?
With a county operating budget of over a million dollars, $100 million, excuse me, and we have a tax rate of 43 cents on the hundred, we are the sixth lowest in the state. I think it absolutely needs to stay there, if at all possible. I think the economy in Dare County has been in the tank for the last number of years, and so we can't afford to raise taxes. But we can do what we, what needs to be done in order to find funding and a resolution to Oregon inlet. When we find a resolution to the problem in Oregon inlet and it is open, then it will bring in more revenue for each individual person and, that works in that industry. And the tourism industry is another engine that supports our economy to a tremendous extent. We are seventh out of 100 counties in the state in the funding of our teachers. We have 244 teachers paid from state... We have two-hundred-and-forty-four teachers paid from state funds. There are five-thousand-and-eight-six students, with a hundred-and-eighty being pre-K students. But are you aware that school breakfasts is served to about sixteen percent of the children in Dare County? These, there are many issues that need to be addressed, and I think that as we address these things, that will bring more revenue, that we will find that the money is available to do what needs to be done.
Thank you very much. Ms. Ross.
First, I'd like to, uh, address Oregon inlet because that one really concerns me. Oregon inlet, if it was stabilized and it could be used on a year-round basis, certainly would, would help a tremendous amount as far as the economy goes. I think that one of the most frightening things that the state has done is tried to get control over Oregon inlet, saying that they're gonna put a jetty in on the north side. Um, first of all, if the feds give them Oregon inlet, that gets the federal government totally off the hook as far as providing any kind of funding to keep that inlet open. All you have to do is look at the Coast Guard Station sitting right there at the inlet that the state has owned for years and it's never been rehabbed. Go to Lake Madraske, they were supposed to be, if they got the federal government to give them that, Bellage had the first phase done, when Phase Two came, was two thousand and eight, the money was pulled back because of the economy, which I think everybody understood. But, but we're six years later and it's, it's, or, yeah, six years later and there's not a dime to do that. So, I don't trust the state to put the money in that inlet that, that we need. I think it makes a whole lot more sense to go to Homeland Security, which the Coast Guard is a part of now, and say, "We need that designated as critical homeland security infrastructure." Then they have to keep it open because if they don't, the Coast Guard can't perform their mission. As far as the schools, we've, we've taken a lot of hits in the schools. The county has, has just been over backwards to try to, to give the schools enough money, but the, the things that have happened in Raleigh have been deep. We have students, we had twenty-seven students in classes where we had twenty students four or five years ago. Um, the buses aren't, aren't safe and they can't replace them, or there are some buses with the potential not being safe, so they can't replace them. And they've put a cap on how much money they will give for challenged children, uh, with learning disabilities or physical or mental disabilities. They will not pay extra after twelve-and-a-half percent.
Thank you very much. Excuse me. Mr. Culpepper, would you like to finish this question?
I hope everybody understands that tax revenue, at least most of it, originates from the payroll. You can't take your spouse or your wife out to dinner and pay that food and beverage tax if you don't have the money to take her out to dinner in the first place. You can't buy the fishing license if you don't have the money to buy it. The taxes come from the payroll. When the payroll drops, the tax revenue drops, not just here, at the state and the federal level. I understand why the state's in the bind they're in, we're a right-to-work state, wages are down, and nothing's being done about it. If we can build the wages up, the tax revenue will happen. There's too much money leaving Dare County and not enough of it is staying here in the form of payroll. I'm not quite sure how to handle that, but I do understand the problem. The next part of it, twenty-five years ago, most people in here had never heard of food and beverage tax. I mean, I hadn't. I remember working for Japp when he said, "Oh, by the way, we gotta add a penny tax on our popcorn now because it's prepared." And occupancy tax, we'd never heard of that. We talked about bringing in, um, uh, let's see, it was someone in charge of finding new jobs. Maybe what we need is someone who can figure out new strategies for coming up with taxes. We can't stand any more property tax. Property tax is regressive and, you know, if you don't pay it, they take your property, then where do you live? We need to figure out who's not being taxed and how to get some tax revenue there rather than asking us to pay more. We don't have it, but I'm sure that if we looked hard enough, we could find some revenue from other sources. As I said, I'd never heard of food and beverage tax twenty-five years ago. I'm sure there's other tax forms that we've never heard of today. Ten years ago, fishing tab, fishing license, was unheard of. We need to find alternate sources of revenue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Lee Beasley.
Daniel, my name is Alfred Jackson. This is a two-part question. What is the biggest concern you see facing Dare County? The second part is, and how do you plan to address this concern?
Uh, question five, that's gonna, we're gonna start with Ms. Boswell for this one.
Well, that's a big question. Um, I have two, um, big concerns. One of them is the budget, of course, and the other concern is the Oregon inlet, um, as we've all talked about every, tonight. Our budget is one of our, um, biggest concerns because we seem to be overspending and not, uh, having the revenue that we need for different projects. And once again, the only thing I can say is that we audit our budget line for line with each and every, uh, head of the, the department. Uh, the Oregon inlet, we've been working with. I think we should take it from the federal government and have a less intrusive federal government so that we can handle this on our own. I mean, we've been riding this horse for how many years? Waiting and begging for jetties, repairing. We're gonna have flooding. We're gonna have an inoperable, um, inlet right now, and that's gonna cause an innumerable amount of, um, slowing down on fishing like it has been. It's just gonna continue to be a snowball and be a disaster. So, I think our budget, but we have to do the line order. We can only spend with necessity, not out of wants, and then the Oregon inlet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Tillman, your biggest concern?
Well, my biggest concern for Dare County at this point is the Bonner Bridge and the North Carolina NC-12 corridor going into Hatteras. And of course, Oregon inlet that we've all talked about tonight. They're the two most pressing problems. I don't know whether the state of North Carolina recognizes or no, or realizes how much money comes off of Hatteras Island to sustain the state of North Carolina. So, my fellow commissioners, uh, along with my staff, we have worked diligently getting this type of information to them, um, and we will continue to do that. We have worked hard and, and, and fast with, uh, North Carolina DOT, and I have to say that they have done a fantastic job in, in helping to keep our highway open. The Oregon inlet, I, we have been trying to get our state legislators and the federal government to realize that Oregon inlet is like the highway. That's the way that our fishermen's come and go. So, we want them to, uh, treat it as a highway and to keep it open so that our watermen can go to work every day. I think we must continue to work with our US senators and our congressmen and anyone that will listen to us. Uh, a source of revenue, um, is a, a program that Dare County has been working with that we could apply for, um, some grants to help keep Oregon inlet open. So, we will continue to work to take advantage of any program that we can, can come up with to help keep Oregon inlet, uh, open, keep Highway 12 so our citizens can come and go safely, and to make sure that the Bonner Bridge gets on a track, that we can get that thing built. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Culpepper.
Uh, low wages are the problem. All the things that we're talking about need to be done. It takes tax revenue. The state doesn't have it, the federal government doesn't have it, and we, the citizens, don't have it until our wages are increased. It comes down to this, you can't spend what you don't make. We've all said that. Well, you can't pay taxes on what you don't make either. We have to increase the payrolls, not the number of jobs, but the actual payrolls. We have to do it in some way that it doesn't cause one business to go under and another business to thrive. We all know that offshore oil drilling, I hope we do, is, is not a good idea here on the beach. But there's also businesses that are economically not good on the beach because they pay such low wages. It doesn't do any good for you to save money at the cash register and then get hit with a tax bill because, oh, you know, that cashier, well, she's on welfare and, and she has to have food stamps and she has to have free lunches for her children. Why not just pay the cashier enough money so you don't have to give the government services? Low wages is the biggest problem we have here in Dare County.
Thank you very much. Ms. Ross.
Um, I think Oregon inlet, Bonner Bridge, NC-12, um, beach nourishment, all of those issues are long-term issues that we have to remain focused on, but we can't hide behind them. There are other issues that have to be dealt with, and, and having a year-round sustainable economy is my biggest concern. We have thirty-five thousand people who live here. A lot of them are retirees who are on fixed income, but the number of low-wage earners we have is horrendous. Um, Dare Ca- the inflation has been ten percent since two thousand and eight. You see it when you go to the grocery stores, you see it when you go into the dress shops, you see it when you go get your car repaired. And so, to say that to be responsible, we have to continue at a, a net neutral revenue or revenue-neutral budget is ridiculous because July nineteenth, I'm a first responder. July nineteenth, I was called out after eleven o'clock at night, and there were so many calls going back and forth that I called the next, or the next week and said, "Where were we last Friday night? How, what was going on with all this?" We got down to one ambulance covering from Oregon inlet to Duck to Eastlake to Stumpy Point. Thank God, the other ambulances started coming back online soon after that. But we're not paying enough in EMS to ke- to keep people. They're trying to make overtime. The overtime right now is a million and a half a year. To get the salaries straightened out, then we, we wouldn't have that problem, but we're jeopardizing human safety now, and we can't do that. We've, we've gotta just stand up and do the right thing by these employees.
Thank you very much. Excuse me. Mr. Overman.
I think the biggest, uh, concern is the, the key word that you hear a lot, and that is access. Um, Oregon inlet, uh, has an economic impact of approximately four-hundred million dollars per year, uh, when you factor in, uh, all of the activities that are associated with it, from fishing, the boat-building industry, and recreation. It is imperative that we keep Oregon inlet open through dredging, stabilization with jetties, weers, and sand bypass to, uh, keep that road to the ocean available and to have access for all of the people who need it. Um, if that requires, uh, Dare County getting back to self-sufficiency in doing that, then that is something that we're going to have to look at very hard. There is, uh, too much economic impact regarding Oregon inlet to ignore it. Jobs in general are, are another key area. Thankfully, we have, uh, good, good employers, uh, in the, uh, in Wanches. Uh, one of our employers there, Gunboats, just announced, uh, that they are working with some, uh, grants right now through the state of North Carolina, and if they come through, they will add a hundred additional jobs in Wanches and will take over two additional buildings there and move manufacturing from China to the United States. Uh, that is a key thing that can happen when we have the type of employers that Gunboats is. The Highway 12 corridor, including the Bonner Bridge, to help us keep access to Hatteras Island. Hatteras, uh, accounts for twenty-eight percent of, of our budget. Beach nourishment provides access for the tourists, and that is something that we, uh, is of ultimate importance to Dare County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Umlund.
I think that we're all in agreement that Oregon inlet and the Bonner Bridge, access to, uh, to Hatteras Island through Highway 12 is a major concern. And I think that if we can get the federal government to do what they had promised to do when the Park Service took over properties here in Dare County, that it is an issue that is a federal government concern, and we need to insist that they do what they promised to do many years ago, back in the forties and fifties. If we can get Oregon inlet open, then it will increase the amount of money that is brought in, it will increase wages in Dare County, it will make a difference to all of the citizens of Dare County. Um, my suggestion would be that we renew effort to have these issues addressed with the people that have the means to take care of the issues.
Thank you very much. Uh, and Mr. Shea, we'll hear from you.
Okay. Uh, the biggest issue I see facing us is our economy, and it's a two-part issue, current jobs and new jobs. The first part, maintain current jobs, particularly our watermen facing restrictions and other industries dependent on the Oregon inlet. To address these, I would suggest that everyone use the red book issued by the big women voters and call your senators, senators and representatives in Washington and Raleigh and ask them to help us here in Dare County with the regulations and legislation that are hurting our economy now and threatening us in the future. Bringing in new business and full-time jobs will be a win-win situation for our residents and for our county in terms of revenue.
Thank you. Thanks for the plug, too.
I charged you that.
Mr. Dunn, would you like to answer that question, please?
Yes, I wish I had time to give you all the eighteen of my immediate concerns, but I'll just, I'll just go with the ones top on the list that I know we need to have something done right away. We've all said the replacement of the Bonner Bridge is an issue that needs immediate resolution. The, the bridge being a lifeline to Hatteras Island predominantly for our local residents but our visitors as well. Just picture that not being there, or picture us having a death from something malfunctioning on that bridge, which, I tell you, I feel that could happen any day. The rating that's on that bridge, so it's gotta be replaced immediately. Because you just think, how can we justify not only compromising access to necessary resources and our great folks at Hatteras Island, but the economic progress to the safety of all who travel across that bridge? I mean, it's just detrimental. We get that done, and trust me, we've been working on it fast and furious, and it just will not come quickly enough, but trust me, the Board of Commissioners has not let down for a second in getting that done. There again, and I've said it before, keeping the Oregon inlet open is another great concern with enormous impact on our local residents and economy. I can't imagine how many more jobs we'd have right now down in Wanches if it were very easy to navigate through the Oregon inlet. It's almost impossible. And for the fish, it would normally be coming in here on our fishermen's boats going up to Virginia. We're losing all that, and that is just, I just don't like that at all, which we'll keep working on. Already mentioned, we suffered, uh, our boat-building industry is down forty-one percent and fishpacking house is down twenty percent, not to mention all the loss of jobs, revenues, and economic development. There again, I mentioned our charter fishing industry has felt the impact of the devastating situation as well. Creating a jetty system is guaranteed opportunity to keep the inlet open and thriving. I'm sure we'd have to still do maintenance, but it would keep it open and thriving. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have time for one more question, and Ms. Beasley has that question for you.
Good evening. Uh, with class size limits done away with after third grade at the state level, what solutions can you outline to lower class sizes, especially in our elementary schools?
Uh, Mr. Overman, would you start this number six question, please?
Regarding class size limits, uh, particularly in the elementary school, uh, classes, uh, I mentioned earlier that, uh, Dare County is the best-funded on a per pupil basis school system in the state of North Carolina, and, uh, all intentions are to, to keep it at the very highest levels. Um, class size is something that... Class size is something that is, is going to have to be dealt with in a traditional way by adding teachers and potentially adding classrooms as well if there's not enough classroom space available. If there is a need, Dare County has always stepped up regarding education when a need has developed for our educational system, and we will do the same thing again. It is inherent in our DNA that we're going to support education fully. If, if we get a huge influx of elementary school-aged kids, we're going to take care of them. That's what we do, that's what we have done, and that's what we will continue to do.
Thank you very much. Mr. Culpepper, here's set number two. For this one.
When I think of education, I know that people of the lower-income brackets, they think more of daycare. They're more concerned about what can I do so that I can go to workdays? They want to be able to send their children to school at seven a.m. and pick them up at six p.m. We have something called After-School Enrichment Program right now that allows you to leave your elementary school child in school until six o'clock. They get their homework done, they get to play, they get a snack. So what we could do is spread the school day out so that we would have a block of morning classes and a block of afternoon classes. During the morning block, the afternoon kids would be playing, and during the afternoon block, the morning kids would be playing. It would achieve exactly what the, the working families need. They would have daycare for their children, and you would be using the classrooms more often, but with best children in each classroom at the same time.
All right, thank you. Ms. Tillit.
It is very important that we, as parents, as commissioners, as citizens, stay behind our Board of Education members, and we have a fantastic school board, to help them understand that the increased classroom size troubles you as a parent, us as citizens. If the school board does not hear from the families and the folk in our communities, then they might think it's okay. Money is the main reason, and I'm certainly hoping that when our school board and our county commissioners sit down in their next quarterly meeting, that they will share this concern, the question that came up about class size, because it is a concern. We need our children to be able to move around in the classroom. Our classrooms for those younger grades, K through four, five, were not built to hold twenty-five, twenty-seven, thirty children, because those little ones, or my age one, we need room to move around. So we, we need to really keep an eye on this and to talk with the school board members and let them know how you feel. I believe that they will be to help us and budgeting as far as the county commissioners. When we are working on our budget with the school board, that's something we too can bring up and let them know that it is a concern throughout the county.
Thank you very much. Ms. Boswell, class size.
Education is one of the top priorities in Dare County, and I can assure you that our education and our children will continue to be one of the top priorities. If our classroom sizes are too large, we must take action to allocate funds for new teachers and new classrooms. It is very important that we have a classroom or an environment conducive for learning for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dunn.
The education our students get, I mean, I believe we all know that's our future, and they've gotta get a great education. As far as the overcrowding, I know Chairman Judge and myself, we travel to schools often, and I know, gosh, months ago, maybe a year ago, as fast as time flies, but we visited the, the Manio Elementary School, and we witnessed overcrowding in the lunchroom and also in the classroom. We spent quite a bit of time there that day, and I know we came back to our board and, explained the situation and that, and then, of course, if you go to Manio now, you see we are doing an addition to the Manio Elementary School. And even though Ms. Wetzel, the principal, was seven hundred students over capacity, she ran that thing like a Timex. There was not missing a beat, everybody was in line, straight file, but when you went into a classroom, you could just feel, it doesn't need to be this crowded. So we have new classrooms going there, and I'm just, I'm really proud of that and the board that I sit on to make that happen, because there isn't any one of us that doesn't support education one-hundred-and-ten percent, because once again, that is our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ross.
I don't think that we can answer all the shortcomings in the school district, the financial shortcomings because of all the state cuts, and I think that there's probably more coming. I think we need to be cognizant of it, and I think that we need to have discussions with them, but first we have to accept the fact, we cannot continue on a flat budget. If we help the schools out any more than we're doing now, then we have to go up in taxes, and that's not always a bad thing. If it improves your education, it's just part of living. And the same thing with your own households. Look at how your own costs have gone up. One penny generates one point two million dollars, so, and one penny on a two-hundred-thousand-dollar house is the equivalent of lunch for two at Bass Nights. I think everybody could give up one lunch for two at Bass Nights, even though we all love the place, to fund education. I think that we have to be realistic about these things, and I think that, that this thing of, of we're gonna keep the budget right where it is, is just insanity, and it's, it's not in the best interest of Dare County. We don't have any more services to take away unless you wanna start taking away parks and rec, or unless you wanna take away home health. We have to be realistic about this. The, the vendors that we do business with from the county have all gone up in their prices, and we haven't said, well, we're sorry, but we're gonna keep this flat budget, so, you know, we're not gonna pay you that, 'cause then we don't have the, the product. So I think we have to realistically look at these things and, and talk with the school board and see what needs to be done and how we can help.
Thank you. Mr. Shea.
Class size is now an issue in, in the elementary schools, and it's likely to get worse. Education is a door to the future for our children. We owe them this opportunity. We are, as you know, we are adding new classrooms in Manio, at the Manio Elementary School. There does not seem to be any answer to class size issue, that it has not already been looked at, but to find a, but we must find a way to solve this with new classrooms and new teachers.
Thank you very much. And finally, Ms. Omsley.
We're very fortunate in our school systems. We have wonderful school systems. We have quality teachers in every classroom, and when we neglect our younger children in the elementary school, they get the foundation that will make them be successful in high school and in college and for the rest of their lives. So they are one of our most important resources. Whatever it takes to be able to fund the necessary teachers and whatever it needs to take to, to build the classrooms, needs to be done. Dare County has been premier in looking for our school systems, and I'm proud of our school systems in Dare County. I don't know if you know it or not, but Dare County has thirty-nine point five, twenty percent of the funding of teachers is from the county. Thirty-nine point five percent is what Dare County puts toward our school systems. Do you know that the state average is fifteen point twelve? So we are, we are aggressive in taking care of our children, and we will continue to do so, and if I'm on the board, I will make that a priority in seeing that our children have the necessary thing, necessary funding to, to be able to be successful in their endeavors.
Thank you very much. That is the questions for tonight. I, I'm sorry that we didn't get to everyone's. You missed out on questions and concerns about adult daycare and Alzheimer's, soundside flooding, more school overcrowding, and more attracting business and budget questions. So you have quite a curious and well-spoken audience. And I also say it's really nice to know we have such bright, energetic, and dedicated people who run for office in Dare County. We have a time now to do our closing statements, which will be two minutes, and I, we're going to be doing it in reverse of the opening statements, so that means that we will start with Mr. Overman, then go to Ms. Ross, and then straight down the line. Thank you. Two minutes, please.
For the past eleven months, it has been my privilege and honor to serve the people of Dare County. I've tried to frame my service around decisions based on facts, forty years of practical experience, and not politics, and I have worked diligently to understand the intricacies of county government. I have found that that is a continuing learning experience, given the dynamic nature of the issues facing us. We live in a unique and wonderful area, and we are duty-bound to keep it that way. People come here from all over the world, to the extent that tourism is the prime economic generator for our county, providing the majority of an approximately one point two billion-dollar economy, and our tourism industry must be sustained. Our fishing and boat-building industries are also vital to the county, accounting for millions of dollars of economic impact. I support our fishermen in their constant struggle with overregulation on the state and federal levels. Further, I believe we must have stable, open inlets so that our fishermen and boatbuilders can thrive and hopefully return these industries to historic levels. We must also continue to provide the required and expected services for all residents at affordable rates and balance all services with the revenues necessary to keep them viable. I'm excited about the future for Dare County. We do have issues, but they are solvable in both an economically and environmentally sound manner. With proper economic development added to our existing economies, I'm sure we will have increased growth in the future, built upon all the positive things that Dare County has to offer. Thank you for your time, and again, I respectfully ask you for your vote on November fourth.
Thank you, Mr. Overman. Ms. Ross.
Dare County has just weathered six of the worst years in this county's history in the past hundred years, as far as the economy goes, and they've gotten this through, but it's, it's time to look forward, and it's time to be realistic about what our problems are and start tackling them. We can't afford for people, we have more than seven hundred county employees full-time, nine hundred if you include all the part-time. If you give them a decent wage and one that's with, already in their pay range, that money goes back into the economy. The reason that people shut down here in the summer, or in the wintertime, is because there's no money in the economy. There's gonna be even less money in the economy this winter. We need to step back and look at the whole picture of how, how the economy works and what we can do to start having a year-round economy in addition to all the tourism and things like that. I think out of the box. I don't, I don't do things because I did them this way last week. I'm always looking for better things. I'm always talking to people and getting other people's opinions. I don't do things in a vacuum. I'm a pragmatist. I'm a little left on some things, I'm a little right on some things, but I'm always honest about where I am, and if I tell you something today, if my answer changes tomorrow, it's because I've gotten different facts, and I'll say that, but I will never mislead you. I hope that when you go to vote on November fourth, you will cast your ballot for me, and I promise that I will work hard, I will be transparent, and I'll work for the people of Dare County.
Thank you so much. Mr. Dunn.
Well, I'll go back for just a second. I know I said I had eighteen items as far as issues, but I won't be able to get into all of them, but I do wanna say that we do face a lot of issues, a lot of hard work to be completed, yet I've enjoyed doing this for the citizens of Dare County and the visitors, and I guess earlier I'm asking for your vote on November fourth. I do know I want to make sure we continue to recruit and retain qualified teachers to increase the benefit to our students, and I know I wanna look out for their salaries and the benefits that go with good, qualified teachers. Beach nourishment, I've talked about it, I can't tell well for the last eight years, I guess, if not longer, but anyways, just, I wanna keep our beaches and water and everything just as good as they can be, because once again, that is our economic development. We need to maintain what we have, and because economic development is local, we need to make our county the very best it can possibly be. I know that I wanna continue to sustain the quality of life for everyone that lives in Dare County, all citizens, and I definitely wanna be an advocate for our community and continue, as I've done in the last eight years, almost eight years, be eight years, November, but to, to communicate with you, I see many faces that I've talked to you in person, on the phone, and you're the ones that have helped me make a lot of, which I hope, good decisions for our county. So if elected, I still wanna continue to hear from you. I want those phone calls. I'm available twenty-four seven. My phone number is two one six, six six eight six. It's the quickest way to get in touch with me, or maxd@darnc.com is my commissioner email address. But once again, I look forward to working very hard for you, and thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you very much. Ms. Boswell.
We must retain our experience and professional county employees to ensure the future growth and safety of Dare County. We must maintain a balanced budget that has a healthy general fund for future expenditures. Each of us is familiar with the budget, be it your home budget, your business budget, or the county budget. It's still a budget, and each of us is aware of what happens when we run out of money, before we run out of money, we're in debt. This is a very real concern in Dare County. We're not spending our money as wisely as we should, and this affects each and every one of us. You cannot spin your way into prosperity or spin your way out of debt. Present ruling board keeps spending our money with little thought and giving to the bond or credit rating, with little or no thought for emergencies. It's been one project after another rolling out our dollars. We need to make a change in the current administration. How does government make money? Do they sell cars? No, of course not. Televisions? No, they raise revenue, and that is your taxes. How deep do you want the current administration to reach into your pocket? We need to concentrate on Oregon Inlet before it's impassable, losing our fishing industry, boating industry, and causing flooding inland. We need to build our bridge before we have a total collapse and have lives, loss of lives. We need to maintain a safe highway throughout the Outer Banks, which is NC-12. We need to mitigate the negative effects of our overburdens in the federal government on our local economy. I'm willing and able to do the hard work necessary to maintain our current bond rating, and I am willing to do the research needed to keep Dare County safe and successful. And I'm ready to be a voice in Raleigh that will not be silenced until we get the safe passageways that are necessary for Dare County. Dare County is overdue for a change, but that change start with me, and I ask that you vote for me on November the fourth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Tillit.
First, I would like to thank the League for hosting this important forum tonight. We have a wonderful, diverse population on the Outer Banks, and while I celebrate the differences each community offer, I also strongly believe that we are one county with an equal voice for all citizens. The citizens of Dare County know that they can call or contact me, day or night. They have done that, and I'd like for them to continue doing that. I believe that there is nothing more important than our safe bridges, roads, transportation, water, medical and health care, and of course, education. As our county grows, I will continue to support all measures to enhance the health and safety of all citizens of this county. I have worked tirelessly for the betterment of our young folk and people of all ages. I know- I know who you are, all over this county. I offer you my time, my talent and my experience. I am open and approachable, studying the issues and always working to make sure that the best decision for all of us who live and call Dare County home. I am Virginia Tillot. I am a Dare County Commissioner. I am the best candidate for the Board of Commissioners and humbly ask for your support and your vote on November the fourth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tillot. Ms. Hoffman.
I know this forum tonight has been very informative for you, the voters of Dare County, and that you understand the importance of getting out the vote. It is critical that more of our citizens participate in this process. With a twenty-plus percent turnout, it does not truly reflect the wishes of the majority. The right to vote should not be taken lightly. I was a registered Democrat all of my life, until I read their platform several years ago. They no longer represent my values. I am now a Republican, but that does not mean that I would not support all of you regardless of your affiliation. It seems likely that our federal government is going in the direction of a Republican board and we would have a better opportunity for being heard if we had a Republican board here. As a Christian, I hold true to the values that the founders of our Constitution and Bill of Rights exemplified when our country was formed. My decisions will be based upon these principles. Your concerns resonate with me. I too am concerned about several things, some of which are, one, the percentage of our people unemployed or underemployed, two, organ inlet access for the fishing industry, the safety of the bonder bridge and access through Highway twelve to Hatteras Island and the economy of the county, the high cost of home ownership and the loss of homes due to escalating cost of flood insurance and homeowners insurance. I'm an advocate for free enterprise and feel that we must foster a climate that's conducive to self-autonomy and less dependency on government. Our country was founded by proud, hard-working men and women who made this country great. I'm asking for your vote tonight and I would like the opportunity to be able to serve you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Culpepper.
I've heard a lot of talk about boat building. My grandfather was a boat builder. Mack Minja used to sit on this council, bought several boats from him. Mac Ray, over in Long Cheese, bought a fleet of little fishing boats from him. And then when my grandfather died, we had all the tools we needed to continue the boat building. I mean, even tools that you seldom use. Everett Tate, the former postmaster of Nags Head and Charlie Johnson made an arrangement with, with my grandmother to rent these tools and to continue Culpepper Boat Works. Town in Nags Head had other ideas. They said our zoning was wrong. Zoning can destroy and does destroy jobs. It's up to us to figure out ways where we can replace these jobs and make sure that the people that lost them are compensated with another job. I'm not saying the government owes you a job, but I'm saying the government shouldn't take your job away from you either. You can find out more about me on my website, BobbyForABetterLife. It's, it's out there and I appreciate you voting for me in next month.
Thank you very much, Mr. Culpepper. Mr. Shea, final word tonight.
Okay, thank you, League of Women Voters and those present for giving me an opportunity to tell you about myself and what I'm planning to do to help our residents. As to my qualifications for this office, they are an extensive background in responsible managerial positions, a member of the board of directors of an international pharmaceutical company, serving as chairman of corporate governance committee and president of a consulting company. I know what businesses need to survive and to thrive in this economy. I am currently spearheading an effort to bring new businesses and new jobs to Dare County. In this effort, I have met with the North Carolina Commerce Secretary and with officials from the University of North Carolina's Institute of Government. During these meetings, we discuss how these organizations can aid us in attracting appropriate businesses and jobs to our county. I am encouraged by these meetings and if these partnerships are successful, it will be a win-win situation for our county as a whole. New businesses and new job opportunities can be a source of increased revenue for our residents in our county. The new revenue will help to hold the line on taxes and the future's accounting phases, unfunded mandates, increasing need for services for our people and increasing costs. All positives for all of us. I welcome input from you and all residents of Dare County. Working together, we can continue to make Dare County second to none as a place to live, work and raise our families. I hope you will honor me with your vote and allow me to continue as you represent.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shea. Thank all of you and thank the audience too. I'd like to remind you, if you weren't just telling, if you don't know, we're going to have another commissioners forum in Buxton on the fifteenth of October. We are also having a forum for the North Carolina State Representative and Senate on the Nags Head Elementary School at four o'clock on Sunday afternoon, October nineteenth. We're having a forum for law enforcement officers and judicial officials on October twenty-second in the Nags Head Conference Room at seven PM. And we're also, the League's upcoming program and our, our ideas of educating our voters here in Dare County, we're having a program on fracking in North Carolina on November nineteenth at the Pitts Center at seven PM. Remember, the early voting starts on the twenty-third through Saturday, November first. Times and locations are posted on our website and of course, Election Day is the fourth. You will need, you will need a photo ID, you will not need a photo ID for election in two thousand and fourteen, but as the law stands now, you will need one in two thousand and sixteen and the League is a very energetic advocate of helping anyone who needs help in maintaining, getting the documents or transportation or anything one needs to obtain an ID so you will not miss out on the voting in two thousand and sixteen. So we hope that our mission, as we encourage you to, as we encourage ourselves and you to strive to make democracy work, I think this is a great example and we really do appreciate your attendance. If you would like to join us, we also have membership folders at the table. Thank you very much.